Hundred yards and made it ninety.
May calls meeting order. First time is roll call.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Knox.
Here.
The Mills. Alderman Skinner.
Here.
Alderman Sol.
Here.
There's a corner.
All right, next time be invocation led by Pastor Jason Williams from Valley Community Church followed by a pledge of allegiance from Alderman Skinner.
Pray. Almighty thinking for tonight, I pray first of all, for our leaders, God, we thank you for those who sacrificed and serve and help lead our community, God, and pray your blessing upon them, God, pray protection over them and their family, God, watch over or keep them. Lord, many times the challenges are difficult, God, we thank you for those who are willing to step up and lead in our community, God, we thank you for that, God, pray wisdom for them as they make decisions for our community, God. Lord, we desire your blessing upon our community, and God, we thank you for the things that you have blessed us with, God, continue to bless our community as we continue to seek you, God, and Lord, I thank you for this time to not bless this meeting and all who are here, God, we thank you, and we praise the Lord in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, next time is the approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mayor.
Saying no proclamations, then we'll move on to public comment. We ask citizens come forward to the podium and microphone, make sure you've signed in with your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
I'm Jan Brill, one zero three five Ephraim. Two things. The first is that while I live for the time when Ephraim is totally resurfaced, city workers came out and patched our street and did a wonderful job of doing so, and we appreciate it. I'm at the end of that street, so I appreciate it. The second is I don't know exactly who I'm supposed to thank about the fair, but whoever they are, they all should be thanked. I know the mayor's definitely involved. And it was blessed by wonderful weather, and the Green Valley Democrats had a booth there, and we had a lot of response. I don't know if you know, but we have, anytime we've been at the fair, we have the pin the issue tail on the donkey. So we have a donkey. He's kind of looking over his rear end, and we ask people what issue is important to you, and then they give us the issue, and if it's a real issue and not hating somebody, if it's a real issue, we put it on the on the donkey. So I thought you might be interested in the results of that because it is sort of a view of what people are thinking. There were one hundred and fifty-nine tails on our donkey when we got done. Every year we've done it, the winner is education, but that was not the case this year. The winner with twenty-seven votes, tails, twenty-seven tails, was reproductive rights. Second, with twenty-two, was women's rights, and third was sixteen, education. One was teacher pay. I included it in the number. So I thought you might want to know the results, and thank you so much. We all did our community proud with that fair this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Good evening, Board. Dale Arnold, thirty-one, six oh three, East Ryan Road, Green Valley, Missouri. I'm here tonight on an issue that's on your agenda, and that is a restriction that controls what goes on in the backyards of citizens' property. This is a situation that we have current ordinances that will deal with most any issue that will populate in that particular situation. It's, I believe, an overstep of government to go past the front of your property and start telling what you can and can't do in your backyard. Yes, you should maintain it. You should keep the mode. You should, you know, keep it in a certain decorum. But our weed ordinances and health and safety ordinances would protect that particular issue. I know over the process of this discussion that it has fluctuated quite a bit from what originally it was to what it has come out in this particular version. And I spoke with a lot of people over the process of this, and I have signed petitions, which I know petition has no bearing on the board, but it is a reflection of voters in the wards that are not in favor of this type of any regulation in their backyards. And I would hope that we'd consider the people that hear, because these names are just from a very short time period of discussing this with people, and they did not want to see anything that changed in this particular ordinance other than what it has currently in place. So I would hope that you would take it in consideration as you look at this particular ordinance. My understanding, that I've been told, and I would like to ask that if this is true, that you stated on the record when you do discuss this, is that the current situation that anybody is under would be grandfathered, and that this new ordinance would not affect anybody until that property either sells onto someone else. Which is another issue is that when that property sells, these restrictions could negatively affect the property value of that particular piece of property. So most of the situations that were discussed on this were transit-type issues in that they come and they go. I mean, campers were discussed the most and other trailers, and people don't keep them very long. I'm probably an exception there. But it's something that the issue usually deals and takes care of itself, so goes along with my reasoning. I'll give you these copies here.
Okay.
I know the people on the planning and zoning worked hard and discussed this issue quite a bit. Mr. Hedley was the one descending vote against this ordinance. He's, in my opinion, saw that this was not something that was necessary or in its current form that is necessary in our city, and I would hope that you all would take up that and consider that so that we don't put restrictions on our citizens beyond what is absolutely necessary. Less government is better government, and that's what I'm asking you for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Schonger. I live at seven eighty Southwest Ryan Road, and I here too am speaking on the ordinance, item number fourteen D on by limiting parking in rear yard. I too am opposed to this ordinance. It seems like a direct overreach and overstep of government. I noticed at the beginning of the meeting, everyone stood up instead of the pledge of allegiance. I hope that everyone on the board is a firm believer in everything that the pledge of allegiance stands for and everything that was fought for and worked for throughout that process of becoming our own country. One of those things that's discussed in the pledge of allegiance is liberty. Do any of you all know the definition of liberty? The definition of liberty, if you'll indulge me, as defined by the Oxford Dictionary, is the ability to live as one chooses without too many restrictions from authority or government. Now, I'm assuming that some of you up here, and probably some of you in this room, have fought for the government, have served in the military, and have fought to uphold those values. And this overreach of the city by trying to limit what someone can do on their own personal property is in direct violation of that liberty, of one's liberty to be able to live out their life as they choose without too many restrictions. The ordinance is basically based on aesthetics. Somebody doesn't like it. I don't like this. I don't like that. Well, if that's the case, I can drive down Main Street and say, I don't like seeing fourteen used car dealerships. That may be a bit of an overstatement, but I don't think by much, just on my driving down here this evening. So if that's the case, maybe we should pass an ordinance on how many used car lots can be on Main Street. I mean, we want to revitalize downtown. I think limiting that might benefit us so it doesn't look like a giant used parking lot. Ordinance has already exist, as others have spoken, that already address unkept property, health hazards that may that may come up or arise from this so that you can force people not to have an abundance or unkept yard. It also does, as mentioned earlier, impact the value of the property by limiting what the current and any future owners of said property may be able to use it, how they would be able to use it. And the also, in my opinion, the ordinance also imposes the property owner's budget and causes an undue expense by forcing owners that would not be in compliance of this by having to seek an outside storage lot for anything that they may have that would go above and beyond what the ordinance restricts. If I'm not, if I remember correctly from the planning and zoning commission, it said you were allowed up to two items of any sort, so riding lawnmower, car trailer, RV. Oh, wait a minute, that's one too many. I can't have that many, so now I have to find a storage lot or storage facility for one or multiple things, which is now already impacting a budget that is already strained in these difficult times. One more thing that I cannot afford to do. Anyway, thank you all for your time. I appreciate your consideration, and please, I implore you to consider not approving this ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board? No, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I have most of Alderman Skinner approves the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all of us, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Seeing no previous business, new business, or presentations, move on to public hearings. First public hearing this evening is property tax hearing.
Mayor, members of the board, as you know, every year you are tasked with setting the levy. We have to have that turned in by October first. So just a reminder, there's four funds basically that make up that levy. You've got the general fund, the debt service fund, Parks and Recreation Fund, and Public Health. So the proposed tax levy for this this year would be point four oh nine two for the general fund, point five five three oh for debt service, point zero nine zero four for Parks and Recreation, and point zero three six zero for Public Health, for a total levy of one point oh eight eight six.
One point oh oh eight six?
Correct.
Previous levy rate?
One point oh seven eight one. So we actually saw a little bit of a decrease in assessed valuation, so this is to keep everything basically even.
How much, how much did we drop it last year? Was it?
Forty cents, I believe.
Forty cents last year?
Thirty-seven cents.
I knew it was in the thirties. Discuss with your questions? All right, as this is a public hearing, I'll open it up for comments either for or against. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak regarding the tax levy? See none, then we'll close the public hearing for that. This public hearing we have is regarding City Code, Chapter four hundred, zoning regulation amendment section four hundred point two nine zero, off-street parking and loading regulations.
Mayor, members of the board, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Trozen to give an overview.
Thank you. So in June of two thousand twenty-two, we began talking about this section of the code and looking at the issue of parking in the rear yard in residential districts on the grass. There have been several meetings and several draft amendments that have been reviewed and revised. At the July tenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting this year, the commission voted to proceed with the amendment that has been advertised for a public hearing and is proposed in Commission Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh one. This amendment adds to section four hundred point two nine oh that no more than two of the following items, boat, unloaded utility trailer, all-terrain vehicle, non-motorized camper, or lawnmower, are allowed to park in the rear yard of property occupied with a residence. That the amendment further provides that automobiles, trucks, recreation vehicle, or any other similar motorized vehicles are not allowed to park in the rear yard except when a residence has a rear yard garage entry with a concrete drive. The Board of Alderman, if the Board of Alderman approved this amendment, there will be an effective date in the ordinance. This effective date is typically the same date when the ordinance is approved. Once the effective date is determined, if you had been parking a vehicle, truck, RV, or any other item listed above, regardless of how many, you would be able to continue parking in the rear yard under section four hundred point two seven one, under the non-conforming use section. According to City Code four hundred point two seven one, a property owner would only lose the right to non-conforming use if the use is continued for a period of twelve months or more. So using an RV as an example, I could basically, or this could also pertain to a vehicle or truck. If a property owns owner parks an RV in the rear yard on the grass before the effective date of the ordinance, then they would be able to drive the RV from the property and then return and park in the rear yard if they are not gone for more than twelve months. If they are gone for more than twelve months, the non-conforming use that was grandfathered will be abandoned by the property owner. Upon the property owner's return, the RV can no longer be parked in the rear yard due to said abandonment. The non-conforming use applies to the owner of the property on the effective date of the ordinance. If the property is sold after the effective date of the ordinance, the new owner does not have the right to the non-conforming use. The new property owner would need to comply with the new code amendment. So public notice was given in the examiner on Saturday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, regarding this public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The commission voted four to one to recommend approval to the Board of Alderman. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have any questions, comments?
What brought this up? Like, what was the reasoning behind this?
We have complaints from residents of people parking items in their rear yard on the grass, and it was a nuisance to them to see those items parked in the rear yard.
Did they bring a petition or anything, or was it just multiple complaints coming in by phone or email or in person?
Multiple complaints coming in from people. I believe there have been Aldermen who have also received complaints from property owners within their ward. That was also driven by this process as well.
Okay, I mean, because sometimes the loudest person just isn't the right person. You know what I mean? Like, if you have a select group of people who are complaining about something, just because it's like few hundred being loud doesn't mean they're right. I don't like this ordinance. I think it's like gentleman who stood up here and talked, I think it's an overreach, but.
Those initial complaints, were those lawnmowers, or were they all cars? Because I seem to remember it was a lot of discussion about people parking cars in their backyard.
People, what do you mean?
The complaints that were coming in, I seem to remember a lot of the discussion was around people parking cars in their backyards, not lawnmowers, not trailers, not boats. It was cars. It was people that had six cars in the backyard.
Cars, RVs, trailers, being parked in the backyard.
Yes, I've had multiple calls from people in my ward about it. That's how it got started a while back, kind of. People calling here, but people calling me, and, you know, everybody talks about it's an overreach, but, you know, you also got to look out for the other people. You know, what is their rights and everything, beginning and end, you know, of having a nice neighborhood. I had a friend that had a little John boat parked in his backyard, and he let his friend come park his boat in his backyard. And now, how many more boats can somebody park in their backyard? Are they going to start their own little rental service coming out of the backyard? To me, it's just about limitations, you know, because as we all know, next thing you know, I've got two RVs. Well, I can fit another one back here. My buddy needs a place to park it. We don't have any restrictions against it. And I have to come out on my deck or people that have called me and look at everybody's cars or trailers or whatever parked in their backyard. You know, we're not sitting here telling them, buddy, they can't do it. All we're doing is just trying to set some limitations, you know, to, you know, keep the neighborhood.
So don't most HOAs cover that if they do have an HOA?
Well, HOAs would, yes, but some obviously parts of the city don't.
So leaving HOAs out of it, and I tend to agree with Ryan. I think this is a bit much. I don't think it's a liberty issue, but we all give up liberties for the betterment of society. It's what we do. We don't let our grass grow. We don't leave our trashcans out too long. They're just some things that supply society that we all agree is susceptible. I do believe that this is an overreach in the sense that it's too broad. If this were just cars, maybe I could get behind it. I don't think you need to have six or seven cars in your backyard.
Or even just like broken down cars.
Or broken down cars. But my utility trailer, my lawnmower, and then my parts mower is a violation. My car and my parts car puts me right at the limit. It's, I just don't like it, and I'm opposed to it as much as I respect planning and zoning and city staff's recommendation. I just can't get behind it.
Well, being the liaison between that board and here, as Mr. Trozen stated, we started down this road in June of twenty-two, and the pendulum has swung from one side to the other. It's been from, you're not going to park a minibike back there to a free-for-all. It's been, got to have pavement. It's been no pavement, got to do this. It's got to be hard surface that. It has been all over the place, and so this is where it's hammered out. But since this time has started, as most of, you know, I spend a lot of time riding around on the golf cart. In Ward two, it's twenty, twenty to one against it. Some of their reasonings, there's ordinances in place to take care of some of the concerns. Ordinance is already there. Take care of the weeds or whatever growing around it. Some of the people stated they bought the home they bought because there is no homeowners association in that area, and they wanted a little more freedom for what they could do. Another issue is the handful of violators that we had that was really targeted when this started, and the pictures were up of this guy having ten cars and this guy having that. You're not eliminating it. They're grandfathered in, so you didn't gain anything to put this in. Down the road fifteen, twenty years, maybe. I've also had them tell me, if I wanted to live in Overland Park, I'd have bought an Overland Park. We like Green Valley. We like the freedom. Now, again, the majority of my district is the older part of town, but still, it's twenty to one people against this. And I worked with Mark and everybody to hammer out what you see in front of us, but I made it pretty clear to the people on the board then, I will vote no. I think it's the best, the best plan laid out over the last couple of years, but I'll still vote no because I don't think it's right. You're going to tell a homeowner what he can and cannot do in his backyard, and we are not going to get the result that we wanted due to being grandfathered in. So it's just another ordinance being put in that who's going to police it? Who's going to take care of this? Who's going to tell me that, well, you haven't had that parked there for the last twelve months? It's, to me, it's non-enforceable, and it's just going to be, as Kyle said, the squeaky wheel. And so, no, I can't support it, and my, the people I represent are totally against it.
Mark, excuse my ignorance, stuff like this, can this go on the general election in April? Can questions like this, Joe, no?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, to answer Alderman Skinner's question, there are, there are cases out there where, you know, like, the elected officials of a city, the Board of Alderman, you're elected to make the policy decisions for the city, not to delegate that, so that has been determined to be a unlawful delegation of your legislative power to just put it off to the citizens. There have been other cases where that has come up, but, you know, in the end, it's the Board of Alderman's decision to legislate.
You'd have to be a charter, you'd have to have a charter city, be a charter city, correct? Is class four? No, but charter, I think you can, right?
You might be able to do it as a charter city. I'm not certain. There are some intricacies with, you know, what authority, you know, even charter cities would have. In that circumstance, you might be able to create some sort of a city-initiated initiative. I'm not even sure that works right, but that would be like a similar approach.
Well, I just feel like, you know, that, like you said, person that's, you know, loudest isn't always the right person. Well, if you look, especially in Ward one, it's the people, the young loudest are the ones with the RVs, things like that, that want to park in the backyard. But when you look at it, how many people really have those RVs? You'd say, we got a hundred people. I think there was like a hundred, hundred and ten people that was on this petition or whatever. What, we got about five thousand residents, you know, in Ward one? So that's not even ten percent. That's, you know, and I get that, but all those people aren't going to come out here and say, no, we don't want it, you know? So who's one really young loudest? Okay, so the majority don't have it, and my majority don't want it. So that's why it's about limitations. It's not about town somebody can't do it. It's just about limitations. Where do the rights of the rest of the, you know, city, neighborhood, rest? And then if we continue to have, you know, you talk about property value. Well, I go to sell my property, and the person sees, oh, they got three or four RVs parked in their backyard, a couple of boats. I'm not buying that house because I don't want to live there. So when does my property value start going down? You know, things like that. So I think I represent more of the majority of people that feel like, you know, they don't have RVs. They don't have all these things. Why, should my rights always be infringed on? Again, we're not telling people they can't do it. We're just setting limitations about it, because as we know, there's always that person out there that always takes it too far if you don't have something in place.
Mr. Mayor, could I interrupt for just a second? So while you will always hear me championing a great discussion between board members, please keep in mind that this is the public hearing portion of this, and we opened that public hearing at six forty-four. We gave the staff report. We have not heard from the public yet, and this type of discussion is actually more appropriate when you guys are considering the motion on whether to do the first reading on it. So I just, you know, keeping in mind, this is the public hearing portion of this for this evening.
Point well taken. All right, so let me, we'll hold the rest of ours till that part, and what I'll do is I'll open up the public hearing. So anyone who wishes to speak for or against?
Dale Arnold again, thirty-one, six oh three, East Ryan Road. In my research on this, one of the comments that Mr. Cleaver brought up is about it would affect property values from somebody wanting to buy a piece of property. I contacted the state Realtors Board, and I contacted three different Realtors that work in Green Valley and Blue Springs, and asked them specifically if someone had a boat or trailer or a boat in their backyard, would that affect the sale price of the piece of property next door? All of them, the response was is no, it's a mobile piece of property. It'll be here today, gone tomorrow. So that is not a situation where this will affect the sale. Now, if it's not a maintained back lot, and I've seen a couple office and I bar right now that they're doing some renovation, it looks pretty bad in the backyard, but we'll give them time to get that straightened out, and I'm sure they will. But it doesn't affect the resale of the property next to it just because it trailers in the backyard. So it will affect, you know, in my case, I've got four acres of land. I fall under agricultural deal. The ordinance toward this didn't even affect me because of it, but now this one would because they have some residents on that four acres. So it's removing my ability to do what I want, and I get comments from people that come to my house on a garage sale or whatever, and they see my backyard, and they talk about it being a beautiful place because they take pride in the property, you know? So, and it helps me as a retired person on that single set income be able to maintain. be able to maintain my stuff and keep it close where I can make sure it's safe. You go to start putting stuff in, in lots around town and you, you hear all the time about how trailers are broken into or items are sold off of, off of storage lots and so forth. You know, and you pay anywhere from fifty to a hundred and twenty dollars a month for that expense. Well, that would be an expense that someone in a, in a retired situation wouldn't be able to, to want to do that. You know, most people, they buy the most that they can with their money when they buy their, their, their items that they want for the, you know, their trailers or boats, their, their RVs. Uh, and, you know, you get them paid off. You hope that's the end of the expense, but something like this could put these people in this situation where they now have an, uh, an annual cost of operation that, that wasn't there before, uh, if they move into our community. So I could see it affecting my sale of my property is that if I have to tell somebody, yeah, you know, you see, I got all this stuff here, but you won't be able to do that. And if I don't disclose it, am I going to be in trouble with the real estate people because they don't respond, don't, don't disclose that restriction? But there's so many rules when it comes to, when you're selling property that I don't know all of them. So, uh, it just, it just causes a, uh, significant problem of maintaining, educating and, and monitoring, as, as Alderman Knox said, there's no way to keep track of this. I know years ago, we, uh, we, uh, did away with, uh, and wanted parking on the side of homes to be on an improved surface. But they grandfathered it that if you had gravel at this point, you know, you could continue with gravel there. Okay? There's no way of, of watching that, that, you know, that one didn't say if the property is sold or nobody parked anything for a period of year or whatever. So as long as there's effort with being gravel there, you can continue to maintain gravel there to park whatever along next to the side of your house. So I, I appreciate some of the comments some of you made. I, I, I hope that we can, uh, I appreciate what the planning and zoning members have done. They've, they've looked at this long and hard. They've, in, in the discussions, you could tell that they had difficulties with different aspects of the, of this particular ordinance and that they themselves wrestled with what was right and what was wrong. And I, this was a compromise, I think, that they have come up with. And it sounds fair and reasonable, except for the fact that you're taking someone's rights away somewhere down the line, whether he continues to do it or he sells the property and then a new property owner and new resident of Green Valley now doesn't have the same rights and abilities as the previous owner. And I think that, that infringes too much on people's rights, especially once you get past. I, I know from the, from the middle of the street to the curb, we have rules for it. Mow your grass, keep your trashcans picked up, you know, keep your place looking property. To your front door, you don't put a car in your front yard on blocks. You don't put your car out there with all flat tires and stuff in your driveway without a license and stuff on it. It's got to be a licensed motor, you know, motoring vehicle, but that is functional. And if you don't do that, that's because that's out in front and it, it needs to be taken care of. But once you get past the front edge of your house, the, the, the level should be a lot higher before you intervene on someone's rights and ability to do what they want with their property. And that's, that's all I'm asking you for tonight. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the public hearing? All right, we'll close that public hearing then. Next up will be resolutions. Uh, resolution, we have R twenty-four dash forty-seven. It's a resolution authorizing the city administrator enter, enter into an agreement with Hofer Welfler LLC for agriculture, for not agriculture, architectural services related to planning and design of municipal facilities.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution R twenty-four dash forty-seven.
I must, Alderman Knox approved Resolution R twenty-four dash forty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, as you know, we put out an RFQ for architectural services related to, uh, planning and design of municipal facilities. Uh, to include, uh, City Hall, Community Center, Pool and Maintenance Facility. Uh, and this is the, the group that we would like to go forward with. So again, this is for the architectural services related to, uh, planning and designing, uh, of those facilities.
And this is a similar process to what was undergone with the police station.
Correct.
So they'll give us footprints and all that, but they'll do size analysis, space.
I've got one question. Were we still going to look at estimated costs for remodel of this building? Or was that, did we not vote on that? I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, so after the last workshop where we talked about that, the direction was just to look at new for these services.
Any other discussions or questions?
I'm assuming at a later date, we'll have more discussion over how this is actually done.
Yeah, so this is, yep, so this is like that initial phasey stuff to go through the programming and all of that. Like I said, very similar to the, exactly the same as the police station process.
Anything else? All those are fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That's it for resolutions. Next up is ordinances.
Okay, the first one is bill number B twenty-four dash fourteen. This is an ordinance to establish the City of Green Valley, Missouri's annual tax levies for the twenty twenty-four calendar year for general municipal government operations, the retirement of general obligation debt, park maintenance and public health purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the first reading of bill number B twenty-four dash fifteen and bring it back for its second reading.
I must, Alderman's going to approve bill B twenty-four dash fourteen for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this would implement the, uh, tax levy that we talked about in the, uh, public hearing. Um, this year we are asking for two reads because we attempted to wait as long as possible, uh, to make sure that we had the most up-to-date information from the county. So that is why it is on for, for two reads tonight.
Questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
This is the second reading of bill number B twenty-four dash fourteen. This is an ordinance to establish the City of Green Valley, Missouri's annual tax levies for the twenty twenty-four calendar year for general municipal government operations, the retirement of general obligation debt, public, uh, park maintenance and public health purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B twenty-four dash fifteen and approve it as ordinance number twenty-four fifty-five.
I must, Alderman's going to approve bill B twenty-four dash fourteen for its second reading, make it ordinance twenty-four fifty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
For the record, did you say B twenty-four fifteen or B twenty-four fourteen?
Uh, fourteen.
I think you said fifteen. I just wanted to correct it.
Thanks for being on top of it, Brian. It's Monday, okay?
It always is.
Questions or discussion? Thoughts of your roll call?
Alderman Bray.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Knox.
Yes.
Alderman Skinner.
Yes.
Alderman Soul.
Yes.
And the next one, this is bill number B twenty-four fifteen, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the escrow funds sufficient to pay a portion of the outstanding general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-two A of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain documents and other actions.
I move that we accept the first reading of bill number B twenty-four fifteen and make a second reading by title only.
I am. Most of my, I'm sold to approve bill B twenty-four dash fifteen for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, uh, we have, uh, Tom Calico here with, uh, Baker Tilly and Megan Miller with, uh, Gilmore Bell to kind of go over this, uh, this ordinance item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Um, real quickly, this item is really kind of follow-up to the prior item that you just voted on. As part of establishing your bond and interest bill levy, you have the opportunity to do early retirement of some of your outstanding debts, specifically your general obligation bonds, uh, two thousand twenty-two A. So this would authorize the early retirement. So you'll save some money on interest, of course, of, of those bonds, um, up to a million. Um, it'll, the exact amount will be whatever's necessary there to keep levy that you just established. I would respond to any questions.
Questions? All right. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay.
This is the second reading of bill number B twenty-four dash fifteen. This is an ordinance authorizing the escrow funds sufficient to pay a portion of the outstanding general obligation bonds, series two thousand twenty-two A of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain documents and other actions.
I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B twenty-four fifteen and approve it and as ordinance number twenty-four fifty-six.
I must, Alderman's sold to approve bill B twenty-four dash fifteen for its second reading, make it ordinance twenty-four fifty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, this will be roll call.
Alderman Soul.
Yes.
Alderman Skinner.
Yes.
Alderman Knox.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Bray.
Yes.
This will be the first reading of bill number B twenty-four dash sixteen. This is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property owned by L and B Development, Inc., and authorizing the city administrator to execute all documents associated with the purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the first reading of bill number B twenty-four dash sixteen, make a second reading by title only.
I must, Alderman Bray to approve bill B twenty-four dash sixteen for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Skinner, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, as you're aware, we have been, uh, looking for available spaces, uh, for park-related, um, facilities and uses in, on the north side of town. Uh, so this is one that came up, uh, and we were able to negotiate with the owner to come to an agreeable price. So this is approximately seven acres, uh, the northeast corner of Duncan and Dillingham. So basically due east of the, uh, the new fire station that is there.
Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
This is the second reading of bill number B twenty-four dash sixteen. This is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property owned by L and B Development, Inc., and authorizing the city administrator to execute all documents associated with the purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I'm honored to move that we set the second reading of bill twenty-four sixteen and bring it back as ordinance twenty-four fifty-seven.
I must, Alderman Bray to accept bill B twenty-four dash sixteen for its second reading, make it ordinance twenty-four fifty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Skinner, any discussion? Seeing none, this will be roll call.
Alderman Knox.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Bray.
Yes.
Alderman Skinner.
Yes.
Alderman Soul.
Yes.
This is the first reading of bill number B twenty-four dash seventeen. This is an ordinance amending Title fourteen land use, section four hundred dot two nine zero, off-street parking and loading regulations by limiting parking in the rear yard.
Mayor, move that we accept the first reading of bill number B twenty-four dash seventeen and bring it back at its, uh, our next regular session.
I must, Alderman, Alderman Cleaver to accept bill B twenty-four dash seventeen, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Skinner. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this was the item that we had the, uh, second public hearing on.
Is there anything else anyone wanted to say?
I just have one question for clarification. So section two says no more than two of the following items are allowed to park in their rear yard on property occupied with the residence. So is that saying you can, without any improvements, park two items in your backyard?
That's correct.
Okay, so you could park a boat and a camper.
You can park a non-motorized camper in your backyard.
Okay, in a boat.
In a boat.
And I don't have to put a concrete pad down. I don't have to do any improvements to the backyard. Is that grandfathered or this is forever, according to this ordinance?
This would be the ordinance.
Right.
If it goes into effect, what is grandfathered, if you previously parked a motorized RV in your backyard, you can continue to do so unless the use is not abandoned.
Just out of curiosity, why the difference between a motorized camper and like a pole behind camper?
Because there was concern because of automotive fluids.
Okay.
And, and other items in regards to cars, trucks and motorized RVs. You know, leaking fluid or anything else into the grass, running off the grass onto other people's properties. Anyone else have anything additional? Are you good, Alderman Skinner?
I think so.
Well, do we, do we have an ordinance like that would prevent, like, I mean, obviously you just can't have motor oil and antifreeze and everything else run into your neighbor's yard without any repercussion? Like, there's got to be something.
Do we have anything about that?
There's a lot of things.
There's no ordinance against it.
There's no ordinance for like dumping oil in your backyard or anything?
There's EPA laws against it.
I was going to say EPA.
So we don't, we don't have anything?
No, that's my knowledge.
And it would be covered by state law or state regulations for the most part. I mean, that, I don't know, we didn't look that up beforehand just to see specifically the answer to your question. There may or may not be a city ordinance, but there are definitely state laws and state regulations against dumping oil in your backyard. Or any, anywhere outside of a, a proper containment.
Yeah, again, for me, this is kind of, you know, about being also a good neighbor ordinance, you know? Neighborhoods, neighbor, being neighborly, so.
You know, Mr. Arnold brought up a point about undue expense and parking your vehicle or your boat or whatever. Had a rental spot and I never even thought about it. But not this spring, but last spring when I went and got my pontoon boat out of a lot that I paid dearly to park it in. Got it untarped when I got it home, only to find out I was missing two twenty-five pound anchors and three hundred foot anchor line. So needless to say, it doesn't get parked in a spot like that anymore. There's just a lot of little ins and outs to this that you're forcing people to do.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Aye.
All right, so for ordinances, next up the city attorney's reports.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple items, uh, for you and the board this evening. Uh, first, I have the pleasure of introducing Nick Purifoy. Uh, Nick is an associate attorney that started with our office about two weeks ago. Uh, Nick has nineteen years' experience as, as, uh, as an attorney. Uh, most recently, he worked with the, uh, Jackson County Courts and was the lawyer for essentially all of the judges. That might be not the exact way to describe it, pretty close. Uh, so we're, uh, excited about having Nick here. He's kind of tagging along to a few, uh, meetings just so that he can see how those are covered, uh, as we go. I also, uh, would like to announce that we do have another associate attorney starting on a week from tomorrow, so, uh, October first, believe it or not. Uh, her name is Sydney Wilson and with Sydney, uh, starting with us, uh, next week, uh, our firm will be up to fifteen attorneys. So that's the most we've had, uh, under, under roof at one time. So it's kind of a, a neat growth thing and, and hopefully gives us the opportunity to serve all of our clients better. And then the, the last item, uh, is, uh, the International Municipal Lawyers Association, uh, conference starts, uh, this week down in O- Orlando, Florida. Um, I will be attending that conference. So I'll be out along with, uh, an attorney from our Springfield office and an attorney from our Jeff City office, uh, Wednesday through Sunday. You may, for those of you who were here five years ago, you may recall I was recognized as a local government fellow, uh, by this organization, uh, for my, you know, kind of work in municipal law. And this year, uh, I have to go through a recertification process essentially, and so I, uh, was informed that I'll be, uh, provided with that recertification while I'm, while I'm down there at the conference. So, so pretty excited about that. So that's all I have.
I believe there might be a hurricane forming down there that's coming that way.
Not going to lie, I just happened to see that and realized that, you know, so, uh, hopefully we're.
I look at the tropic report every day and yeah, we've been watching that thing and they say maybe by Thursday, maybe it'll be a.
I think it's a Gulf thing right now that maybe it'll get passed, but I think I'll pack my, my umbrella.
Between Pensacola and Tampa or something.
Good times, okay.
Teresa can tell you all about.
You want to borrow her galoshes?
Uh, next up, city administrator and staff reports.
Uh, Mr. Trozen. Uh, thank you. Uh, two announcements. The first one is our annual household hazardous waste event, collection event is scheduled for Saturday, October fifth. It'll start at eight AM and will end probably. It'll start at eight AM and will end probably around noon or until the trucks are full. Uh, this is a free event for residents of Grain Valley. We're co-hosting this event again with the, uh, Jackson County and Oak Grove and, and our city. Uh, the facility, uh, the place of collection will be at the Jackson County Public Works Facility. That's located at three four nine zero zero East Old US forty highway. So what we collect is paint and paint-related products, automotive fluids, batteries, lawn and garden chemicals, glues and adhesives, household cleaners, no electronics, and no business waste will be accepted. Again, this is free for the residents of Grain Valley.
What was the date again? I'm sorry.
October fifth, Saturday.
Ryan, that's where you'll take your motor oil and so on.
I can't just dump it in my backyard?
Cleaver's yard maybe, but not, not.
Yeah, second item.
That's for sure.
The second item that I'd like to share with you is that we, uh, had applied for, uh, federal funding through the Federal Highway Administration on three projects. Um, the three projects is, the first one is the Eagles Parkway improvements. This would be from Buckner Tarzney to Cross Creek Drive. This would add curb and gutter, uh, drainage to the ci- to the street improvements. Sidewalk on the north side, if you recall, we got federal funding for a trail on the south side, and this would also improve the intersection of Kirby and Eagles Parkway, especially the entrance into the high school area. The second project we applied funding for was the Buckner Tarzney Road, Duncan Road intersection improvements. And the third project is the Snibar Boulevard Trail Phase One. This would be a trail from Buckner Tarzney Road to Cross Creek Drive, basically going into the, uh, trailhead that's north of Cross Creek Drive up in that area. So the reason I bring that up is these, uh, projects are in the process where it's open now for public comment. Public comment is available through October fourth, two thousand twenty-four. We've, uh, put this up on, uh, the city's Facebook page where you can go and hook into the link through Mid-America Regional Council, and, uh, citizens can comment on each one of these projects. Uh, we had also shared this link with both the, uh, school district as well as the fire district since it will impact those, um, um, government entities in regards to, uh, especially the improvements on Eagles Parkway and then the intersection improvements.
Just a quick question on the, uh, you said the trail is gonna go from Buckner Tarzney to, you said basically the trailhead at Cross Creek. Uh, the, are they actually gonna connect? I mean, what does bas- basically entail?
Well, there, what do you mean?
It says, it says, well, you said it's basically gonna go up to the trail, but is it going to go to the trail? Like, I just, listen to the words.
So there, there's a parking lot right there at the end of Cross Creek?
Okay, so it's gonna be that parking lot.
So, so then the tr- trail actually starts again up north of the parking lot.
Okay, gotcha.
So does it connect?
Right, I see.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, that is it.
All right. Next up then is Board of Alvin Reports and Comments. Alvin Cleaver?
Uh, just wanted to say shout out to the, thank you to the city staff, Ken, city staff, for we had a little uh, drainage issue in Ward one here with a resident, and they reached out and met with him and everything's worked out, so just wanted to say thanks.
Alvin Knox?
Uh, yes, I understand that we lost one of our committee members, Jeff Carney passed away, and I just wanted to pass long condolences to his family.
Alvin Skinner?
Uh, just quick, um, the last meeting, I think it was back in August, I had brought up an idea of a buffer zone between zonings, and I was just curious if there'd been any research on that.
Yep, so we have started looking at that, and we'll have something back to you or to the board, uh, at the next board meeting to look at some of the options that are out there that other communities do.
Perfect, thank you.
How you want to go.
Um, and then the second, I don't know what you guys did, um, if you had dirt on somebody, but the repaving of BB. Appreciate it. It's not easy to do, so.
Kind of showed up.
Whatever, whatever happened, I appreciate it. There is no more crater in front of Culvers, so. Appreciate that.
Still try to drive around it when you.
I, out of habit, I start going right right there.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Alvin Bray?
Uh, a couple things, uh, start with, at one point in time, we discussed the possibility of doing, uh, timed parking downtown. Are we still considering that?
Um, so we had, it, the way it's been going, it seemed to work okay, so we, uh, Mark did do some research on what other cities have for options, but we have not moved forward with that at this point.
Now the school has started up and I'm driving through there daily. Starting to notice kind of the traffic patterns of what's parked there and what's not. Definitely seen a lot of the same vehicles all day long.
Yeah, so I mean, if that's something that the board still wants us to look at, then we'd be happy at looking at that.
Yeah, but we haven't heard anything, complaints from the businesses, have we? I know, I, I've noticed a lot of the same cars there too, but.
And then, uh, back on July twenty-second, I believe, was the meeting. I had requested clarification from legal on fairly implied in the Dillon doctrine, Dillon rule. I haven't heard anything back.
If I can get that through to the city administrator to, to you.
It's just an explanation of what fairly implied means legally.
Okay.
I'm not going to need more detail.
Alvin Sol?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, contacted, I believe I texted you about it, the, uh, the cracking in the new resurfaced, uh, road.
Mm-hmm.
Has anybody, we haven't heard that.
What is that?
On Ridgeview, on Southwest Ridge, seven hundred block, there's some, uh, on that new, newly, uh, resurfaced road, there's some, uh, lateral, uh, cracks when it did pavement on the, uh, west side. And then, uh, other thing I was gonna ask was, uh, for chief, the admin sergeant's, uh, slot, uh, has that been filled yet or has the process been started?
No.
Okay, uh, what, what's, what's the timeframe on that?
Uh, we anticipate, we're, we just posted the patrol sergeant's position. And that testing will be in October, and so we hope to test that in November.
Okay, and that's for the, uh, admin?
It's not called the admin. By policy, it's gonna be operational sergeant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that, that process has started then? Well, it's gonna be starting here shortly.
Yeah, we, we hope to have that list out in November.
Okay, uh, when, when is the, uh, negotiations for, uh, what's the deadline for the officers to bid their shifts?
It's in November.
Okay, is there, is it gonna be announced before that?
Uh, the patrol sergeants will. They, uh, we don't know when we'll be able to fill that, even if it's listed now. Uh, we don't have a, a tentative time when that would actually, uh, transfers would be made to make a change in staffing for patrol sergeant.
Okay, do, are you guys short on?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, next up is mayor's reports. Uh, this is the first time we've met, uh, since the fair. I just want to thank all staff that's, that helped with that this year. And everyone else's help. I think it went over really well. I mean, I know we have large crowds because that's the best the carnival's ever done, and pretty sure it's the best the beer guard's ever done, so. Excited about that. We had a lot of, a lot of kids out and those were some things we'll work through, but we've already, you know, did our after action with the police department, so we got a good, uh, it's moving forward on what to do for next year. So, again, the weather always helps. I felt bad for Buckner and Blue Springs both this weekend because their fairs were both this weekend, and I know how that goes, so I felt bad for them. So, uh, that's all I have. I know we have an executive session for.
Uh, we do one legal, two real estate, and three personnel.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session?
So move.
Second.
Second, Alvin Skinner. Any discussion? Will be your roll call. Alvin Cleaver?
Yes.
Alvin Knox?
Yes.
Skinner?
Yes.
Alvin Bray?
Yes.
Alvin Sol? All right, we'll adjourn the executive session.